The committee on finance and law will come to order, calling the roll Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Ennis is absent and Mr. Fiori is present. During the agenda, there are no student activities to report. We have two bills payable warrants, first one for fiscal twenty-two in the amount of five thousand three hundred ten dollars.
Motion to approve, but I do have some discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So again, my concern as always is FY twenty-two is still showing up and we're now in March. And if I could probably get a better explanation of all these course reimbursements. So if I put my accounting hat on, okay, these courses were encumbered, the dollars were encumbered. The courses were taken when? And when were they completed?
It depends on what, it depends on the teacher or staff member that submitted it. What happens is a teacher or a staff member can submit for course reimbursement. So they, we have mostly, we have a certain amount of money for course reimbursement. All teachers are, they get their first allotment of the first course reimbursement. So we do all of those first. If there are any, there is any more funding available, then you have course, the second round. So a teacher may go ahead and take two to three courses in a year. So the first reimbursement will only do everybody's first. So we might have staff that just are finishing up their courses and they are maybe done with their, just their first course reimbursement. So it all depends upon what round they are in. So these could be from, it could be a summer class, it could be, it could have been a spring class. It could have been, we don't know, but again, we must go ahead by the contract language. We must fulfill all of, or to whatever, of course, if we have the money, to fulfill first requests for course reimbursements. And if there's funding available, a teacher may go ahead and submit for a second request.
Sure. So noted, Mr. Chairman, through you, a third request on all of these mostly?
I'd have to check to confirm which requests they are on. But again, they, it would, does it say it right here? Yes, I'm sorry, yes, there, I apologize.
So my train of thought is this, right? So if this course starts June first and is completed in, on August first, for example, right? So we have an FY twenty-two expense, but it's not completed until August, right? So technically, you can't reimburse till the completion of the course. So it's an FY twenty-two and you reimburse upon the successful completion of the course. But what are these taking place? That's what I'm struggling with.
Well, since these are FY twenty-two, FY twenty-two third requests, I would probably say spring. Spring or even summer.
Okay.
What also could be happening, because this is this, I remember running into this when I was in the position. If there's still a pool of money, so if we have not exhausted the sixty thousand dollars and we've already reimbursed everybody for their first and second reimbursement and there's still funding available, we'll continue to reimburse people who submitted for reimbursement, as Mrs. Moynihan mentioned. So I could put in for ten courses, I'm going to be guaranteed at least one. And if funding exists to reimburse me for course two, course three, course four, then Mrs. Bullock in the finance office will reimburse those people. So it's a matter of her chasing the paperwork, getting it into accounting to let those folks be reimbursed so we can draw down the sixty thousand dollars.
So, you know, again, so this could be going on until what, June thirtieth of this year?
Well, we have.
I mean, and just for clarity, I have no problem with, you know, continuing professional development, you know, the course reimbursements. I have no problem with this. It's just an accounting nightmare that, to me, it seems like it would be an accounting nightmare that, you know, there's got to be a stop point where, you know, something has to carry over to FY twenty-three. I don't know if, again.
Yeah, it wouldn't carry over to fiscal twenty-three. And it really comes down to the bookkeepers, Mrs. Moynihan and City Hall. And City Hall, I believe, has given us a stop, a drop dead date where the books have to be closed for fiscal twenty-two.
No, no.
So we're allowed to continue spending, I think last we checked.
We have fiscal, we still have a balance of eighteen eight.
Okay. That's all my discussion, Mr. Chairman. So the motion to approve.
Okay, Chair seconds. Is there any further discussion hearing on all the favor six, if I may say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. Then warrant for fiscal twenty-three in the amount of four hundred eight thousand one hundred eleven dollars and thirty-one cents.
Mr. Chairman, I move a motion to also approve, but on discussion. The only thing that I have not seen, we have a procurement card and I haven't seen anything to the, how would the procurement card be listed?
We are going to be providing at our next school committee meeting, we, I will be providing you with a P-card update.
Okay, so that wouldn't appear on the warrant? Like Home Depot, the example would be like not page ten, we have like Home Depot Pro, which is a technically a P-card, right?
Well, it's a home, it's their card, it's their credit card.
Right, but it's still.
Not their P-card, it's their credit card.
The Home Depot credit card, right. So how does, how do we, how would we see that on the warrant if the P-card has been used?
Again, I'll be providing that, all the information for that with the backup because it works directly with the, the city of Taunton as well. So I will go ahead and provide you all with the necessary information, how we do it with the, with Susan Bullock, our bookkeeper. And she will be putting something together for me with a memo and will be providing that with updates monthly going forward.
So has it been used since we've had it?
It has been used. It has been used.
All right. I just, you know, wondering why you haven't seen it, that's all.
So actually, it was a, I believe Mrs. Moynihan informed me that this came up in a meeting that they were having with the auditor. And I think the process we're going to use that Mrs. Moynihan shared with me is it'll be listed as an agenda item, P-card. And there'll be a memo that'll list the services that have been made, the services that, the items that were purchased similar to what we do with the special education legal. And then the backup will be attached, so you'll see the line item of all the materials that were purchased. Because my question similar to you is why isn't it in the warrant? And because it's, because it's the credit card, I thought it would be easy that it would appear as an American Express line, ten thousand dollars, the name of the credit card. But we're going to provide you with the actual backup so you can actually see the items that are being purchased. And it'll appear as a, as an item on the actual agenda.
So where does the approval come in to pay the card?
It goes, it's linked with the city of Taunton's P-card. So it's all, we're all in the umbrella, but we have our own entity, our own P-card number. And then what happens is they provide us with the invoice for the city, for us, for the city of Taunton School Department. And then we go ahead and put forth how much money it would be with the necessary backup for approval. And again, it doesn't show up that way, so that is why we're going to be showing it in, in a memo going forward.
So it's hitting our budget?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm concerned. I really would like to see this ongoing in a different manner because I know the P-card's been in our possession for a few months.
Yeah, the challenge, Dr. DeMello, Dr. DeMello, would be that the P-card will make purchases in real time. So to come and get, so if you ask.
No, no, but I'm just saying, no, not for prior approval. I'm just saying, if it's hitting our budget, I mean, we don't have a limit established for the P-card, right? I mean, we could buy whatever we want.
I think the limit's fifty thousand?
I don't know exactly, but we do have like a credit limit on it, absolutely. But again, when somebody asks for the P-card, they'll go into the office and they have to fill out exactly what it's for and how much money it is for.
And all the items that we're using it for, all those items that staff would typically pay out of pocket.
Right, and if you remember, I'm the one that suggested a P-card, so I believe in the process. It's just that if it's hitting our budget, we're not approving it, I'm concerned. So maybe someday we can have a conversation with the CFO and I don't know, I mean.
Oh, maybe that's something we can refer to.
Mr. Chairman Fiori, you've been around for a while, I mean, is that concerning?
Well, we didn't have P-cards before.
Right.
I mean, what we've been approving is that we do have account cards such as that Home Depot one and that's been the experience. I can't say we've ever had anything where, and actually, even with the P-card, we're going to be approving something that's already been expended. It's not a matter of, I mean, it's going to be a matter of being taken out of our accounts, but it's not going to be a matter of the actual expenditure.
Right, but ultimately, we are the keepers of the budget, right, the school committee?
And if there's any items that I question, I question Mrs.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, this is nothing. This is nothing to do with irregularities or.
Provide you with the backup so you can see from year to date what has been approved and purchased on the P-card.
Yeah, we just haven't had this.
See, the part that you just mentioned, so presented approved, who approved it?
I approved it and Mrs. Moynihan authorized it as an appropriate expenditure.
Okay.
Similar to what we would do when staff would come in and ask to, can I go to Staples and give my pass for thirty dollars? Yes, we would, we would allow them to do it, tell them that we would reimburse them. It's the same process.
Okay.
You're going to see big ticket items, for example, like Mr. McPhail was here today for the P-card because we're sending a group of students to Orlando, Spaldeka. So I believe that's going to be in the thousands.
Well, yeah, there was a Decker on here tonight also, but that's not, is that related?
That was Massachusetts State's, now they're going to national.
But did he use the P-card for that?
I don't believe so.
No, no, this one will be more for to be purchasing, right.
Right.
I believe that was for the charges for.
Right, exactly.
All right, I, again, you know, I don't have an issue with it. I just think, you know, in full transparency, I'd like to take a look at it, you know, at least a monthly update. And basically, that's it. So my motion, I move the motion to approve once again.
Okay, Chair seconds. Any discussion further? Hearing on all the favors, if I may say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we're out of here.
Call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the second regular March meeting of the school committee. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Let's be in the spirit and attitude of prayer. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you. Mr. Fiori, if you could do the roll call, please.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Fiori is present. Mr. Lura.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
Dr. DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present, thank you. Could I get a motion for the approval of the minutes for March first, twenty twenty-three?
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Tonight, we have with us Isaiah Wendell for the Student Advisory Committee Report.
Good evening, everyone. As Mayor O'Connell said, my name is Isaiah Wendell and I am with the Taunton High School Advisory Committee. Today, I will be talking about the different things that are going on in Taunton High School right now. Recently, we've hired more security guards, which is, I feel is a great thing, walking around the halls, making sure all the students are safe. SATs for juniors begin next Wednesday, the twenty-second. Spring sports tryouts begin Monday, the twentieth. All city band and chorus concerts are in the Taunton High Fieldhouse today and tomorrow. Mr. T H S has recently passed, I think it was the sixth, I believe. I heard it was a great turnout. I was unfortunately not able to attend, but I heard it was a great time. Progress reports for term three will be released next week. I'm excited to see what my grades are.
I am sure they are excellent.
I hope so. And this past, last week was World Language and Diversity Week at Taunton High School. Every day of the week was a different event. We started the week with World Arts Day, which we did mosaics in world language classes. Tuesday was Global Music Day, where we listened to different music. And there was a presentation in our auditorium of hip-hop dancers. And there was other dancers later in the day. I cannot recall what kind of dancers they were. Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday was International Film Day, where in our world language classes, we watched The Swimmer, a great movie. I enjoyed it. And ending last week was Thursday Cultural Lenses Day, which was, which is always a great time for students and staff to share their experiences through their different diversities and how they've experienced, what they've experienced in their life. That is all from Taunton High at this time.
Okay, well, thank you for the update, Isaiah. Yes, Mr. Fiori?
You were speaking of the security guards. Was there staffing in school today?
Not that I heard of.
On March fifteenth, they usually have an Hides of March thing with the Latin club. Did, did they do that today?
You had everybody startled for a moment there, Mr. Fiori. Aye, the Hides of March.
Yeah, not to my knowledge today, at least.
So as usual, though, a lot of very wonderful and fun things going on at Taunton High, so thank you for the update. Okay, moving on, is there any public input? And this evening, we have a presentation from City of Taunton CFO, Patrick Delarusso, and Matthew Parent, solar and energy consultant for Summit Energy. So we welcome from the mayor's office, your presentation this evening.
Well, thank you, Mayor O'Connell, distinguished members of the school committee, Superintendent Cabral, and City of Taunton School Department Leadership Team. Thank you for having us in this evening to go over some solar savings opportunities we'd like to present to you all. Tonight, we plan on providing the school, school committee information on the twelve schools and what opportunities can be had at each of those locations. We plan to go over cost, discuss the savings and potential revenues that are applicable. We're also going to go over the benefits of solar and how it can help the city and schools collectively, working together. After the presentation is concluded and if the committee members are satisfied, it's the hope that the superintendent is granted the support to explore these opportunities with members of the mayor's office. I'd like to point out that this is an exciting, real opportunity that's tried and true. It has a meaningful impact for, for the community as a whole. With that, it's my honor to introduce you to our solar consultant, Mr. Matthew Parent, who will lead the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you for having me tonight. We just wanted to go over putting solar on the schools in a broad scope and how we can analyze the rooftop, maximize the output on the rooftop and what that savings and those incentives will be. There obviously will be some errors in the design. Let's not try to focus too much on that because this is just first step. We call it indicative sort of design and pricing. So we're going to evaluate the rooftops. In the first slide, where are we? Right here? Oh, there we go. So on the first slide, this is an overview of all the schools in town. And all the following pages are in detail. So what we're trying to do is maximize the roof's size with solar and then what that cost would be, total incentives, the net cost after incentives, and the annual savings over the life of the system, which here, we're evaluating at thirty years. Okay. So as an example, and this is what we'll see for every school, is the system size in kilowatts, that's seven hundred nineteen point five two in this particular example, is in kilowatt. That's generally how it's done in direct current. The savings in year one is a hundred and fifty thousand based on the current rate that you're paying. That would be the savings. Now, if that changes over time, you'll see the analysis going up over time. That's a conservative rate increase of about three percent year to year. So the overall gross cost of the system is one point eight million. And then, I'm not sure if you're aware, but last August in twenty-two already, there was a bill passed by the president that nonprofits and municipalities can take advantage of the federal tax credit as direct pay. So what that means for you is you can actually get a check from the federal government and in this case, five hundred fifty thousand dollars after you have submitted and installed your system. This would come the year, next year fiscal year. So that really helps nonprofits and municipalities move these projects forward. The next line item, which is RECs, so every solar system has a renewable energy certificate. Every system that's installed in the northeast has a certificate. You can sell these certificates on the open market and, and get cash every year for the generation of that system. So in this case, the total over thirty years is six hundred forty-one thousand dollars. You'll see the breakdown year to year as, as what you see on the production versus what the REC incentive will be. So the net cost of the system is six forty-two and that pays back in seven years. So on this one school, over thirty years, you'll get approximately six million dollar in electricity savings on the one school. Now, this is an initial design. Again, we're looking at a few things here. What you see is obviously it's red and it's orange and it's yellow. We do a shade analysis of every building to maximize energy production. We have to look at setbacks when it comes to accessing the roof, making sure, you know, fire and safety can get up there, making sure HVAC systems can be accessed. So this is a sort of a first pass. Of course, when we get into it, engineers will literally go on the roof, measure things out, we'll do drone survey, we'll look at the roof structure, the roof itself needs to be evaluated, we'll do all that. This is really our just first path to show you what could possibly be done here. That's another view of it. So these panels, the technology in solar has come a long way. They actually have a twenty-five-year warranty on the panels. So if anything was to go wrong with the panel, it's replaced for free. And the inverter as well, I'm not sure how much you know about solar, but when the sun hits the panel, it's in direct current, which goes one way. And then it has to be inverted to AC so it can go all around the building in any direction. So that inverter is also has a twenty-five-year warranty as well. So this is a breakdown of this particular project for this particular school for thirty years. So what you see is your initial cost, your federal tax credit, your electricity bill savings in year one, your PV generation in, it's called kilowatt hours. You'll see that in your electric bill. And then the incentive amount, that's that REC that I was telling you about, the renewable energy certificate. You'll see that REC actually decreases slightly over time. That's because the production of the system slightly decreases by point zero seven percent a year. So even after twenty-five years, it's still producing at about ninety-two percent efficiency. So they're very efficient products. Okay. Do we want to go every school or we're just trying a broad scope?
I think we focus on high school and middle school.
All right. I'll go to the, the high school. Is that the high school? No, that's the other school, hold on. I'm just going to skip to the high school, we'll talk about that. So as you know, in town, there are a few large energy hogs, if you will. One would be wastewater treatment plant and the next is usually the high school and the middle school. It's pretty common that would happen. So we'd like to focus on the high school and what that savings would be. Sorry, that's the, the last five pages of your packet.
Mayor, does everybody have the attachment, the? It's on the table? So it's in a separate attachment, it's not part of the original package? Yes, no? You got it? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Actually, I'll start with the design. So it's obviously a very large building. Each one of those little rectangles is four by seven feet. It's a, let's see if I can see the number of panels. Right there, we're looking at about thirty-five hundred solar panels, producing one point eight six megawatts of power to the school. It's going to produce a lot of energy, a lot of great energy throughout the year. We're looking at about four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year in savings just for the high school in year one. The system cost is three point nine, but you're getting back within a year, one point one million dollars in that federal tax credit as a check from the federal government, plus the REC incentive. So the net cost honestly is only eight hundred and fifty-three thousand considering what the savings is. It's, it's incredible system of what it will save, really. The electricity savings over thirty years, just on the school is eighteen million dollars. Okay. Let's see, this is the breakdown year to year. You, you'll see with that, even that gentle increase of three percent over time, you know, that's, that's substantial savings. So it obviously shows a cash flow model of five point one years. You know, that, that's, that savings is substantial after five, year five. Do you want me to go into other details? Middle school. Okay. Sorry, we're going to go to the middle school. Elementary school. Is that the? There it is. That's fine, okay. If you could go to the Joseph P., Just Martin Middle School in your packet. Sorry to jump around a little bit. Just want to focus on the important projects.
They're all important.
Of course, of course. So in this particular project, has a nice big flat roof that we can put solar on. It has excellent generation from the yellow color that we see. This one, we can do a five hundred and fifty-eight kilowatt system that actually generates six hundred and fifty-seven thousand kilowatt hours a year of energy. And so we'd be looking at an annual savings of just shy of a hundred and twenty-five thousand and a cost of one point four. The tax credit would be four hundred and twenty-seven thousand and the REC incentive over time, I'll show you the year to year. But you're looking at a cumulative about five hundred and thirty-one thousand. So your, your electricity savings on this is about five. Um so your your electricity savings on this is about five to point two million dollars. Um so if we look at year to year, um it's a pretty quick payback and very substantial savings. Um just a quick note on the systems themselves, they're a ballast system. So on a flat roof, they literally just sit there, they're not attached to the roof. So we'll look at the quality of the roof to see how they are, that's an important part of the process. But at any time, the system can be taken off and put back. It's it's not a big lift, there's nothing really um maintenance has to do, there's nothing really you need to do. We'll we'll have a an operating and maintenance agreement in place that's year to year as part of the costs. Um so there's nothing really the city of Taunton has to uh worry about, if you will. Obviously, there'll be things we'll put into contract, um that'll be good for the city. But um it's very little maintenance, um and there's a huge warranty on it. So um it's nice that there's no penetration on it, so that's huge.
And I think uh I think the other thing I think that keep in mind too, not only just the the solar panels themselves, uh but in some instances, if it makes sense, we can also look down the line to the committee, decide that this is an avenue they'd like to explore, uh the opportunity for roof replacements. And those can be sort of built in in conjunction with uh some savings. We can also look at where it would make sense to do that on some of some of the buildings. I know that there's a big need, I know it's a big um money drain on our school, on our building department uh on on the city side. And I think that if we if we could take a look at that, uh it'd be mutually beneficial to all parties as well.
So when you have, let's say, an end-of-life roof that you wanna add as part of the project, the roof cost will get that thirty percent federal tax credit as well, which is really a huge benefit when you're looking at, you know, possibly a couple million dollars of roof costs, so.
And I think with that, I think it's, I think, again, this is a conceptual type of uh rendering that we wanted to provide the school committee tonight. Um wanted to highlight some of the bigger projects. Obviously, inside of the packets is a great deal of information. We don't, I don't think it's prudent of us to go through each and every one of those pages. I think the idea is here, I think the the chart's very simple to um follow and to understand. Um and I think at this time, we'd open it up to any questions um that the mayor or the committee may have.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate that. Uh I think one question that is probably on people's minds is if you could just talk a little bit about the safety of having these on our roofs.
Sure, so every system is built in with fire um safety measures. So if there was ever a short, um it shuts down automatically. That is um standard in Massachusetts that that needs to happen. Um there's very little uh, you know, you know, uh issue with um with solar. Um that's happened over the years. Those happened, you know, in the seventies and the eighties and uh those things have changed as modern technology has has come in.
Yeah, I know I have solar on my roof at home and um I love not paying any bills for many months during the year and getting a little money back as well. So um it's it's been good for us. And I just wanna take a moment to recognize City Council Phil Duarte, who is here this evening with us. Thank you for joining us and showing your support for the potential of this project. So I will open it up to the committee members if they have any questions or comments. Um I know, I think one thing that uh we are possibly looking for tonight is the approval of the committee for um Patrick's office and superintendent's office to kind of join into these discussions. Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with your statement that it'd be a matter to refer to the administration and to us as a committee of the whole. For, you know, I like to review all this information because I see the strengths here and I see the benefits to the city of Taunton. But um if you'll allow us some time to look at the proposal, see the cost benefits and the cost to the project itself. Now, just a quick question, these incentives from the federal credit are from the federal government, are they instantaneous the first year or is it through a period of time?
Sure, the federal tax credit, let's say we installed it this year hypothetically, you'd get that tax credit next fiscal year.
And what about the REX?
The REX is over time, as you can see from that actually particular slide, that REX um. So so once the system is installed and commissioned, um called PTO, those energy credits are then sold on an open market and then you would get those year after year almost instantaneously, within six months, it starts generating REX revenue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Viera.
Um you had mentioned in your presentation that they just sit flat on the roof. None of the roofs will require like bracketing or fastening to the the roof itself?
As far as I can tell, I haven't been on all the roofs, um they look like they're flat roofs. Now, if they go below, you know, like a two pitch or above, then we'd have to somehow bracket it. But it looks like they're all flat, so when they're flat, we can ballast it. So let's say it has a a rubber membrane roof, you then put a rubber on top of that, the uh steel bracket, and then the panel clicks into the bracket and it were literally concrete blocks that sit on that bracket. So the reason there is that amount of weight and it adds about six pounds per square foot, so we'll have our structural engineer take a look at all the roofs, make sure we're good to go on that, um is that they don't blow away, so they're rated for a hundred and forty mile an hour wind loads.
So so the brackets themselves don't need to be replaced before the twenty-five or thirty uh?
No, not at all.
And if they caused leaks of any sort, would we be responsible for that or would?
No, you wouldn't. That would all be part of the contract.
And then um you you spoke about safety, so if there if there was ever a fire, God forbid, the fire department wouldn't have any issues?
Correct, yeah, no issues.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh do you just wanna touch maybe on your experience, how long you've been doing this, number of schools?
Sure, um I've been doing this for about eight years now. Um I'm also a solar consultant for the town of Marshfield and also a solar consultant for Summit Energy and also Ares Solar. I only work on commercial projects, I handle probably a couple hundred million dollars of uh solar projects a year.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. So uh who is Summit Solar or Summit Energy? Who who is this company out of?
Well, they're just one of my partners. Um they're out of uh Mansfield, actually, they've been around for about ten years. Um they work in residential and commercial, uh and they do about two hundred and fifty million dollars in solar projects every year.
And what school districts have you implemented this in already in Massachusetts?
In Marshfield right now.
In Marshfield?
Yeah. Right now, we're doing about twenty-three megawatts system in Marshfield on all the schools, police stations, DPW. Um it's been widely successful there.
Do you recall how many buildings uh for the school district in Marshfield?
That's a good question. Seven schools, DPW, council on aging, dog park.
Just the schools, seven schools.
You got it.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
All right, well, if there's no further questions, Mr. Laura?
Now, this solar energy is supplemented by your local electrical power as well as a backup?
Sure, so TMLP is never taken out of the picture, they're always gonna provide you power, right? Um right now, you get your power from TMLP, you'll get it from the sun during the day and obviously, there's no sun at night, so you won't get power. So that generation is really calculated for daytime hours only, unless you were to add battery and that's a that's another discussion.
And they utilize what, two separate meters?
Uh I'm sorry, the the solar?
Yeah, the the power control are by meters?
Yeah, exactly, so the so the solar goes behind a meter. So if a building has multiple meters, we'll go behind every meter, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So what are the wishes of the committee?
Move that it go to committee of the whole for further review and discussion and uh?
Could we have a date certain on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Well, uh I'd also like to include Mrs. Fagan, so of course she couldn't be here tonight and uh we like to do things together, so. I don't know, we're we're trying to actually schedule a committee of the whole to review the uh East Taunton Elementary School and a few other outstanding items. So that I expect it very, very soon, but we haven't been able to connect on a date, so I'm thinking early April.
Okay, so.
Better be an earlier April.
Second motion.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed, none opposed, so voted, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in your packet, you'll have uh my latest superintendent's update. So I want to provide you some information regarding a couple of events uh that I was able to uh participate in personally and also one I was able to participate in virtually. So the first is Taunton Alternative High School participates in the two thousand twenty-three Junior Achievement Titan Business Challenge. On Wednesday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-three, students and staff from the Taunton Alternative High School participated in the tenth annual Junior Achievement Titan Business Challenge. The event was held at the Claire T. Conney Library located on the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth campus. The JA Titan Business Challenge is a business strategy competition in which high school students from surrounding area high schools spend the day at UMass Dartmouth and compete against one another in teams of three using an online interactive business simulation. This year, JA introduced a new simulator. This new interactive learning experience allows students to compete as CEOs in the telecommunications industry, allowing them to feel firsthand how an organization evaluates alternatives, makes decisions, analyzes the outcomes of their decisions and how organizations strategize what to do next. The competition is uniquely designed to stimulate student creativity, test their leadership skills and demonstrate the competitive nature of the free market system. Each year, over two hundred high school students from thirteen area schools compete for the title of Titan Champions. In addition to the competition, students also hear and learn from some of the areas or some of the region's top business leaders and compete for college scholarships. This year, Uponaquid High School took first and second place, so students from the Uponaquid teams will walk away with a one thousand dollar first place prize for each student on the team. The second place team from Uponaquid High School received seven hundred and fifty dollars and it was nice to see a Taunton team placed third, although it wasn't the Taunton Alternative High School. We are proud of our uh teammates down the road at Bristol Plymouth who finished third as each member of their team received a five hundred dollar high uh college scholarship. Best of all, the competition is free and there is no cost to the students alter the school system to participate. With the focus on financial literacy and insights into the workforce, the JA Business Titan Challenge bring businesses, brings the business of economics to life as students make financial decisions about production, marketing, research and development and corporate social responsibility. I'm very proud of this next item, which is, again, there's been a lot of discussion amongst school board members and in the district about dysregulated behavior. The dysregulated behavior that we have discussed in our schools has also spilled over into athletic events. And I am proud to lead this work as a member of the Taunton Public Schools and also representative of the urban superintendent's network and a superintendent in Southeastern Massachusetts. On Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, I had the honor and privilege of representing our school system as a panelist on an international webinar hosted by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NIASK. The webinar was a follow-up to a previous panel discussion at the hundred and thirty-seventh Annual NIASK Conference held in Boston, Massachusetts earlier this school year. I, along with Carissa Niehoff, Chief Executive Officer of the National Federation of State High School Associations, Bob Baldwin, Executive Director of the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, and Glenn Luganary, Executive Director of the Connecticut Association of Schools and Intercolastic Athletic Conference, served as panelists. The international webinar was viewed by several hundred attendees spanning the far reaches of the globe. The focus of the discussion centered on the development of educationally-based school athletic programs that play a valuable role in preparing young people for the world. Athletic programs that are educationally grounded help students develop social and emotional skills, including teamwork, dedication, goal orientation and resilience, just to name a few. Increasingly, however, school athletic programs are facing challenges. These challenges include poor sportsmanship, hazing and a win-first perspective not compatible with educationally-based programs. A standard-based approach can be used to support school leadership in developing and maintaining quality school athletic programs. I had the pleasure of sharing the challenges facing the public school systems, especially urban school system like ours, and how school systems are responding to these challenges. During my portion of the panel discussion, I shared our work as a school system to educate our students on the importance of sportsmanship and how we work to eliminate barriers that in many cases deter students from participation. In addition, in addition, I also shared our work to develop a comprehensive athletic facility and maintenance plan. The panel discussion ended with a question and answer session and a discussion regarding the next steps in continuing this work. As a superintendent of Taunton Public Schools, I was, it was an honor to serve on this esteemed panel and to highlight the many successes on the planning field in long-range, in our long-range facilities plan. I was also proud to share the work of Athletic Director Marga Adovianelli, Taunton High School Principal Scott Holcomb and their staff to address the many concerns negatively impacting high school student athletics and the work to eliminate barriers preventing students from participating in high school sports athletic programs. In addition, if you'll bear with me, I have three uh superintendent talking points. So I want to commend Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Christopher Barata, and I cannot, oh, I have it, uh for his work in organizing a very successful professional day which took place on March tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh I'll just share with you some of the highlights. We did have a keynote speaker on March tenth, which uh the professional day was held from eight AM to two PM. The day opened with a keynote speaker, Ms. Tara Traynor. Ms. Traynor is a consultant from Novak Consulting. Her presentation was both informative and engaging. Her topic was universal design for learning, which focuses on developing access points for all students to be able to access our high-quality instructional materials. As a current Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning in Oxford, Massachusetts, her ability to provide resources, supports and yet, and yes, humorous stories regarding students forged a great connection with our staff. Ms. Traynor will be returning to the district in the fall and will continue our focus on engaging all students throughout the year as well. In addition to having a keynote speaker, we have professional development offerings that focused on iReady, which is a math diagnostic tool, alternative assessments, early college planning, MTSS and attendance procedures at Taunton High School, CPR recertification for all our nurses, pre-K writing rubric to review our pre-K work on the development of a standards-based report card, Title One educators, end-of-year planning regarding testing, and we also had a Wyatt Far assessment overview and report interpretation. As one educator, she had a Mr. Barata, today was probably the best PD day I have had in the past nine years. The first speaker was nice and she was interactive and knows exactly how it feels to be in the trenches. It was relevant and it was real. I'd also like to uh inform the committee that myself, Assistant uh Mr. Adovianelli, Athletic Director and High School Principal Scott Holcomb, on Saturday, we attended a workshop that was held in Franklin, Massachusetts at the MIAA Center that focused on addressing hate in school sports. It was a workshop that was well-attended with over thirty Assistant Superintendent, Superintendents, Athletic Directors and Principals from throughout Massachusetts. This, that was one of thirteen regional workshops sponsored by newly-elected Governor uh Healy. And last but not least, just a reminder to the school board and also to the public uh that on March twenty-ninth, we will have our annual school committee recognition. And with that, that concludes my report and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. So if there are no questions, we'll just receive and place on file?
Second?
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor? Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Administrative business, uh do we need to do anything with the staffing report, Superintendent?
Unless there are any questions.
We received and placed on file.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor? Opposed, none opposed, so voted, Taunton Public Schools Teacher Vacancy Update.
Uh as I've done in the past, I provided you with a bi-weekly update on where we are with vacancies. As you can see, I believe we're sitting on thirteen vacancies, but I'm also excited to report that tomorrow uh we will be holding our own job fair here in Taunton Public Schools, Epole Elementary School. Uh the Taunton Public Schools HR Department, or Human Resource Department, excuse me, has also registered to attend the Bridgewater State University Job Fair and we will also be attending or participating in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's virtual job fair. And we're also in discussions about possibly attending job fairs outside of the, outside of Massachusetts to try to um identify or acquire a workforce that's more reflective of our student body. So there's a lot of work taking place to make sure we have qualified candidates teaching our students.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Superintendent, on the junior ROTC instructor, um that's been sitting there for a while. I know the Air Force is is part of this process, correct? Uh is there anything we can do to move this along? I mean, is there anybody high up on the totem pole that can help us out here?
So we've been a while. So the position is actually currently filled with um, the gentleman's name escapes. So the position is actually currently filled with, the gentleman's name escapes me, shame on me for not knowing his name. But the position is filled, so we continue to work with the Air Force ROTC to identify a qualified candidate that meets all the credentials so that we have two people serving, or two educators serving in that role. But we do have a person who is filling and doing an excellent job, and we'll continue to work with the Air Force to identify a viable candidate.
Are you talking about Sergeant LePlante?
That name was LePlante, is that the name that comes to mind?
Thank you, Sergeant LePlante. I apologize to Sergeant LePlante and his family if you're watching from home.
That's okay.
Right. So, but we're still looking for one other. Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Law Subcommittee. Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself and Dr. DeMello. The agenda was strictly bills payable items for fiscal '22 and '23. And the fiscal '22 warrant, Dr. DeMello had questions about how we're still making reimbursements for courses that were taken during fiscal '22, and he got something of an explanation from Mrs. Moynihan. And for '23, he had questions about the use of the procurement card. It really hasn't come into effect yet, and we don't have any history of how that's been accounted for in the past because we haven't had that kind of system. Fiscal '22 warrant was for $5,310. Fiscal '23 was for $408,111.31, and we voted approval for both of those before we adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the committee.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Elementary Subcommittee Report, Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, the Subcommittee, myself and Mr. Palowski, met with the principal of the East Taunton Elementary in regards to her priorities in educational teaching and strengthening the overall educational plan within her school. And she outlined two priorities, which was to strengthen tier-one instruction and interventions which will support teaching and learning through differentiated, grade-appropriate instructional experiences that are purposeful, engaging, and equitable. Secondly, she highlighted to develop and strengthen tier-one social and emotional systems of support to address the needs of our students, their families, and our educators throughout the system. East Taunton Elementary, she highlighted, is, population is comprised of 531 students, 30 classrooms, including K, pre-K classroom to four RISE classrooms, and five of each of the kindergartens through grades four, grade-four classrooms. Additionally, they provide the following supports from various educational concepts, and the learning community of East Taunton sets high expectations and standards for all its students. Their internal leadership team is not only, has focus on improving academic practices and supports, but also on expanding the PBIS trainings with staff members in order to provide supports to tier-one and tier-three students. They work closely together with the PTOs, the families, parents, et cetera, in that area to ensure that the students receive the best, possibly, quality education available to them. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the report.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And now we have the high school Subcommittee Report from Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, the high school Subcommittee met, myself and Mr. Viera included. We heard the school improvement plan for Martin Middle School from Principal Pereira. Very extensive, well-done presentation, a lot of positives. I'll hit the highlights. They've got a focus on tier-one instruction as well as social-emotional learning. They've seen a record-high attendance this year. Staff absenteeism is down, and they've seen a significant reduction in behavioral issues. Principal Pereira stressed that her focus is she wants Martin Middle School to be a safe place for her students and her teachers, where they can come to be comfortable and learn. They've had a huge focus on increasing after-school activities, extending the school day, and to their delight, many students have taken advantage of it. So, very well-done presentation, very thought-provoking questions by Mr. Viera, well answered by Principal Pereira. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski.
Motion to accept the report.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. New business, HBAC replace and repair bid. Would that be you, Superintendent?
So I want to commend the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Mrs. Moynihan, as well as our newly-hired Grant Director, Catherine Latimer. We went out and secured a grant to the tune of $1.4 million to replace much-needed ventilation systems and to improve the air quality in several of our schools. So again, this is something that we should commend the Assistant Superintendent and Ms. Latimer for their efforts to write and secure this grant. I will skip around. The grant was awarded, the IVAQ grant was awarded in November, again, $1,444,366. The funds must be obligated by December 31, 2024, which is about halfway through fiscal '25, and the funds must be liquidated by December 31, 2026, which would be, again, about halfway through fiscal '27. So Ms. Latimer and Mrs. Moynihan created an invitation for bid for the Edward F. Letty Preschool, Edmund H. Bennett Elementary School, and the Joseph H. Martin Middle School. We also provided you with a brief scope of work. So at the Letty School, we will replace the unit ventilators. We will purchase and install a new heat pump system that will be connected to the new unit ventilators and purchase an installation of a new packaged rooftop unit to provide heating and ventilation to the cafeteria. At the Bennett School, replacement of the heating and ventilation units in both the cafeteria and gymnasium and replacement of the units will be required to be energy-efficient and improve the current filtration. At the Martin School, replacement of the heating and ventilation units for both the cafeteria and gymnasium, and again, the replacements units will be required to be energy-efficient and improve current filtration. I would be remiss if I didn't commend the Building Department for their help and the support. When we met and talked about this grant, we wanted to focus on those systems that are nearing their end of life, knowing that this is a large cost to the city. We thought it would be wise to be very tactful and strategic in utilizing these funds to address the systems that we know can sometimes be very burdensome on the Building Department to replace. And so I think this money, or these funds, will be very wisely spent on addressing those three items. We plan on, we have posted the bid, and we are scheduled to open the bid on April 5, 2023. So I just wanted to make the committee aware that we have secured a very large grant, and there will be a bid opening to address the scope of work that's outlined below on April 5, 2023.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent. And would you like to go right down the list here?
I'd be happy to. So next, I believe it's already been posted, and if it hasn't, it will be posted this week. So as you are aware, we have a vacancy at the Benjamin A. Freeman Middle School. That position of principal will be posted, and I would like to suggest, or possibly entertain nominations, but because we've had school board members serve in the past, I think it would be wise that we have representatives from the Elementary Subcommittee and the High School Subcommittee. And I have the list in front of me. There is one member who currently serves on both the Elementary and High School Subcommittee, which is Mr. Palowski. So I think it would make sense for Mr. Palowski to serve as a representative from the School Department. I also, again, a suggestion, would recommend that Mr. George serve as a member because he's on the Elementary Subcommittee, he also has experience as an educator, and he also has students in the school system. And I would also suggest that Mr. Viera serve as a member. Again, he has students in the school system, and Mr. Viera serves on the High School Subcommittee. So if that is something that the school committee would entertain, would appreciate that made in the form of a motion. I would like to keep it to an odd number in case there's a need of a tie-breaking vote on who moves forward to be interviewed by me. But obviously, that's something that we can discuss if there are others who wish to serve. Well, again, nothing prevents school board members from attending as well.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I understand, you know, we don't want to create a quorum or tie. Is Mrs. Fagan aware of this also, of this, has there been any discussions with her?
I have not had a discussion with Mrs. Fagan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So does the committee want to make a motion?
Yes, if the members that have been named by Mr. Cabral are willing, I would move that they be nominated to serve.
Would you amend your motion that if Mrs. Fagan chooses, she could serve as an alternate in case one of the members can't attend?
I have the motion.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Do we need to touch on number three and four?
Number three, real quick, nothing that we need to do now, but something that you might want to give some thought and maybe have some discussion amongst the group, is that we are going to be forming a Taunton High School Hall of Fame Committee, and I would like school committee members to participate. And again, I would like an odd number, so whether it's one member or three members, I think it's something that I would serve the committee well, and maybe we can look at the Athletic Subcommittee. And again, if others think this is something that they'd like to participate in, all ears as far as how the committee would like to go about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. So that was the path I was going to bring up. I think the Athletic Subcommittee would be most appropriate to be part of this Hall of Fame Committee and welcome any other members that would like to join. That's my thought.
So the members of the Athletic Subcommittee, as currently constituted, is Mrs. Fagan, serves as the chair, Mr. Viera, and Dr. DeMello.
Thank you. Mr. George?
I would just like to volunteer to be part of that as well if possible, just as a student athlete who also coaches currently and coaches kids at that age. I would love to be a part of that. Thank you.
That's okay. So are you taking action on that tonight, or is that for further discussion at another meeting?
If somebody would like to make that in the form of a motion and possibly...
I would make that in the form of a motion because of the Budget Committee.
And Mr. George is an alternate?
So there is a motion. Can I get a second? Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
I appreciate the way this committee is functioning tonight. We're getting things done. Good job. And then last but not least, this is just more of an announcement for the school board. I know some members, if their work schedules and their family schedules allow, they'd like to attend the community budget workshops. So Assistant Superintendent Moynihan and I are going to be scheduling two budget workshops for the community. There'll be a morning session, April 12, and most likely be held here in the Epole Library, and there'll be a PM session, I believe it's the 14th, not the 13th. I'm going to have to double-check the 13th. I think the 13th is a Wednesday, correct?
13th is a Thursday.
Okay. So I believe it should be the Tuesday. Is the Tuesday, April 11?
Yes.
All right. So we need to make an edit. It's going to be Tuesday, April, oh, no, correct, sorry, I stand corrected. April 12 in the morning, and April 13 will be the evening, the evening session.
May I just ask, Mayor, I thought we had that 12 scheduled for a community forum, the regular community forums?
Correct. Community forum will be in the PM. The community workshop...
So there's going to be two that day?
Again, the budget workshop is voluntary for the school committee.
Right.
I know some members like to attend. That'll be in the morning.
So you're just making it a morning for the, for the public at large. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the 12th in the morning, 13th in the evening. And then I also want to remind the school committee, on April 5, you will hear our FY '24 preliminary budget. That'll be the focus of our first meeting in April.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Moynihan and I need to have that discussion. Usually, we have it around 9:00 or 10:00 because we want to be respectful of parents who have students in tier-three schools and affording them the opportunity to be able to drop off their children and get to Epole. So it'll probably be somewhere between 10:00 and 11:00. But I'll get that out to the committee.
Thank you. We will move, Mr. Palowski?
Yeah, I believe this is the appropriate time to bring this up under new business. This coming Monday, the 20th, 9:00 a.m. at Taunton High School, we will have a meeting of the high school Subcommittee, specifically the Advisory Board Committee. This is to follow up on a meeting of the high school advisory committee that we had on February 8, 2023, in which the students expressed concerns about the school environment. So the administration and the Facilities Department has had time to address many of these concerns. There's a long list of items, so this will be an opportunity for the high school Subcommittee to tour the high school, see the areas, see the concerns that the kids had expressed, and ensure that, you know, we're doing all we can to address the students' concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mr. Chairman?
Mayor, could we possibly post this because I'm sure we have a lot of members that may be attending? Yeah, indeed, right. Post the...
Post, not postpone.
No.
Post.
Post, not postpone.
Yeah, we will post it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. We're all set. We'll move on to unfinished business. Committee of the whole meeting regarding the East Taunton Elementary School naming.
So I can go continue running down the list if you don't mind?
Oh, that would be wonderful.
There are two clipboards on the table, so if members have not had a chance to identify the dates that they are available to meet so that we can schedule the committee, the whole, to discuss the naming or the potential renaming of the East Taunton Elementary School, please identify the dates that you are available. Same goes for number two on the clipboard. If you could identify the dates that you are available, Mrs. Devine and myself will work with the committee to identify nights that we can meet. And also goes for same for number three, we need to schedule a Rule Subcommittee to review the Hague and Sahadi Student Activity Audit. So again, if members of the board, if you haven't identified the dates and the times that you are available, we ask that you please do that before leaving this evening. And then next on the list is a memo from Assistant Superintendent Moynihan to me regarding the RFP. So I just want to share with the committee that per our conversation regarding the public relation request for proposals, Mrs. Moynihan has provided me and the committee with an update. I shared with our school committee, the Taunton Public School District submitted an RFP for public relation services. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, the RFP was posted on COMBYS as well as Goods and Service Bulletin website. During the time the RFP was posted, only two vendors requested a copy of the RFP. Of the two vendors who requested a copy of the RFP, only one submitted a proposal. Unfortunately, the posting did not garner the interest that we anticipated. So based on the deliberation by the school committee on this topic, Mrs. Moynihan and I believe it would be best that we discuss this item and determine if the committee wishes to have Mrs. Moynihan and I, as well as a team of administrators, review the RFP that was submitted or ask us to repost the RFP, which was within our rights, to try to garner more interest, to garner more interest. So again, we need some direction as far as evaluating the RFP that was submitted. Again, it was only one, so it would be difficult to kind of judge it against other RFPs or to go back out and request another, solicit another RFP.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. So at the present moment, we are at will with the present company. Is that clear? We're out of contract? Okay.
We still have credits that we do.
But it's considered like at-will. Okay. So my recommendation would be to continue at-will because I think that we have talked enough around this table about a full-time position in that role. Today, I shared with the superintendent, I just got it today, so I couldn't share it any earlier. High schools, my alma mater Bishop Stang is hiring a full-time person for this particular role, which includes so much more than just the communication piece. I think it's critical that we move in a direction, because we're deliberating FY '24 budget, to really encompass this role a little bit more impactful than just, you know, PR statements at 2:00 in the morning when tragedies happen. So my recommendation would be to continue this at-will and not entertain any more RFPs, not entertain a contract with this present company until we can finally figure out by June 30 what we're going to do going forward. So that's my, my recommendation.
Mr. Laura?
With that statement, does that mean they stay at-will indefinitely?
Well, that's a common, again, we have credits with the current vendor that we will continue to utilize, and we can continue to work and utilize the credits, and I can also have a conversation if we can go on a month-to-month contract with them.
Because if that's the case, and they decide to stop providing service to us after the credits have been exhausted, then what do we have?
I become your Piafra.
Mr. Chairman?
Exactly, Mayor. I think we have many capable people in Taunton Public Schools that could craft some type of memo in case of an emergency, so I'm not concerned with that at all, Mr. Laura. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Number five.
So is the direction, just so I'm clear, is the direction to continue at-will on a month-to-month basis?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
So is it, somebody needs to make... So is it, somebody needs to make that into a motion?
Seconded.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me, on discussion?
What is the motion?
To continue at will.
Okay.
Until the superintendent has a discussion with that company to see...
Okay.
To continue at will until otherwise...
I just want to hear that at will. Thank you, Mayor.
Until the position is made available.
So there's the motion. We get a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
And then number five, I need some direction regarding the second school committee retreat that we had scheduled and then postponed because of inclement weather. Is this something that the committee wishes to reschedule? This this retreat was going to focus on one of the school committee goals, was what, which was to create awareness around diversity, equity, and inclusion.